Let's come to orders. This is working. Do you all hear this? Great. Thank you. Welcome to the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we're here primarily to talk about a conditional zoning application. There is a little more business. Let's first start with a moment of silence. My name is Bill Shy. I'm the chairman of the commission. Why don't we start over here and just have folks introduce themselves? Many of y'all don't know all of us.
And if people remember, just to stay within about an inch or two of your microphone so that both the audience and the online audience can hear everybody. Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm Dan Dean.
Julie Schelm.
Wade Burns.
Lance Johnson.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda as it's been previously circulated?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the April 14th, 2022 meeting?
I'll say move.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Just so you all know, I made a couple of suggestions to Angie on some changes to alphabetize the board and to add a little phrase at one part, but it doesn't really change anything. So I would, would someone move to, well, that's, has that been recirculated, Angie? It's on the website. So would someone move taking my, trusting my remarks that we would adopt amended?
I so moved.
All in favor, say aye. I have not seen John David here. He is an alternate commissioner that's been selected by the town council, and we were going to swear him in today, but we will do that at another time. Alan Crawford is also wasn't, was the ETJ representative. He is now being considered by the town council since Buncombe County has not nominated anybody. So at the town council meeting tonight, I think that they're planning to elect you unless someone else raises their hand. So, thank you. Okay, let's move to the consideration of the conditional zoning. I'd like to have some preliminary remarks. This is unlike the Board of Adjustment where you're seeking an exception. That's a quasi judicial process. Where the lawyers get up, they have their witnesses, you cross-examine them, they finish, questions are asked, then the party is gone. We'll have some formality as a legislative body, but it's not like a law court like the Board of Adjustment was. So we'll hear first from the applicant and we'll hear from presumably from whoever their witnesses are that will participate. We'll ask questions then, and then anybody that is here present or on Zoom, as I understand it, can participate since this is a legislative meeting. When we adopt our recommendations at the conclusion of the hearing, which we hope will be around noon today. It may or may not be. We may continue and we may continue another time, but I'm hopeful that we can make a decision and recommendation today. After that, we have to write that up, and we don't intend to do that today, but we've set a meeting, I think it's June 9th.
That's what has been tentatively placed.
So that we will present the written recommendations at that time, and those will go on to the town council. Town council also has public hearings, and ultimately they will adopt or not adopt the proposal. Okay, everybody understand? Any questions? Okay, with that, Scott wants to make a preliminary presentation, and Scott, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. Josh, if you could, please bring up just a brief presentation. So I'm Scott Adams. I'm the zoning administrator for the town of Montreat, and I've prepared a brief presentation just to give an overview of the project, and then we'll have comments and/or presentation from the applicant. So just a brief overview of the site via text. It's lot 1185. It's currently a vacant lot between properties that are addressed as 157 and 161 Mississippi Road. The current zoning is R1 loaded into the residential. The standard setbacks are 30 feet on the front, 15 feet on the sides, and 30 feet in the rear. Again, currently an existing vacant residential building lot. The minimum lot size for the zoning district is 10,000 square feet. However, this is a lot of record shown there at 9467 square feet. So by virtue of it being a legal lot of record, it's still buildable, subject to other dimensional standards and zoning ordinance. The proposed project is to build a new single-family detached house, and the conditional zoning request is to have a 10-foot side setback setback on the south and west side of the property instead of the standard 15-foot standard. Next slide, please. This is a brief overview of the site. So the subject property is there in the middle of the screen highlighted in yellow. Properties within 250 feet of the subject site were publicly noticed by a male ahead of a community meeting that was held, I believe, March 8th. As a courtesy notice, not as a required notice ahead of this meeting, the properties were also renoticed by a male and also a sign posted on the property. And again, this is just a brief overview of the site. Next slide, please. This is a, just again, a quick description of the nature of the request. You can see there on the south or west side of the property, there's a 10-foot side setback being requested. The standard is a 15-foot side setback. On the north side of the property, there is already an existing 15-foot side setback proposed, and as you'll see on the next slide, that's also key because that is also a 15-foot metropolitan sewerage district sewer easement shown there in the green. So it's both effectively a 15-foot side setback, and there is the easement there, and generally MSD frowns on building anything permanent over the easements. I will also make a quick note on the front setback. I briefly spoke with the architect of this project before this meeting. I just wanted to make a note that the, the letter that was sent out as a public notice to surrounding properties showed the front setback line supposed perpendicular with the property, and this is just an updated graphic showing that that is a 30-foot front step back running with the property. It's minor technicality, but just wanted to clarify that. Next slide, please. This is another view of the property, and this was an updated graphic submitted by the applicant just a couple of days ago. It's basically showing the buildable area and the shaded area and the hatched area kind of, you know, running over both the retaining wall that's on the proposed for the side and the rear of the property and the house footprint. It's really just illustrating the five-foot difference of the 15, what would be a standard 15-foot side setback and the proposed 10-foot side setback. Next slide, please. It's just a brief overview of some of the elevations submitted by the project architects. The average height of the house is measured from average natural grade, so that's essentially taking averages of four different corners of the building. It's 27 foot two. The height limit is 35 feet, so it's within that height limit. Again, that's just looking at the front of the proposed house. The rear, next slide, please. These are side elevations, and I just make a note here of the rear, the proposed rear and side retaining walls that would be required to build the house where it's proposed on the site. Next slide, please. These are just a couple of brief photo overviews of the site. So on the left there, that's 157 Mississippi Road. That's to the south and the west of the subject property, and uphill from the subject property on the right is 161 Mississippi Road. That's north and east, and it's roughly level with the subject property. Next slide, please. So this is just another brief overview of the subject property. In the upper left there, you can see the house at 157 Mississippi Road and the sort of cobbled rock wall in that lower left corner, or lower right corner of the first photo on the left shows the edge of the driveway at 161 Mississippi Road, and that other photo simply shows the center of the subject property. Next slide, please. With that, glad to take any questions or review all would like to move on to the applicant's comments and materials. The slope is, I'd have to look that up right offhand. It is less than 40%, so it is not subject to the steep slope board. That's.
Right. John, you want to come up and present? What's the applicant wants to do?
I think they will introduce themselves. Sorry.
Make sure I do it to the microphone.
You can pull it off.
My name's John Noor. It's nice to meet everyone. If I haven't met you before, I'm an attorney with the Robertson Stevens firm, and I'm helping Mike and Kathy Mater with the conditional zoning application. Mike and Kathy, I think you told me you've been coming to Montreat now for 23 years, just about. Mike is a retired, I guess choir director, right? Presbyterian choir director who's been coming up for the music programming the MRA puts on and regularly stay, forgive me, the name of the inn that you all.
Being still.
Still in, which is sort of their inspiration for what they wanted to build. They've always wanted a small little house up here, and that was the impetus for this project. So when they saw the lot come up for, and if you're wondering my voice, I apologize. It's the allergies. I've taken the COVID test. I am negative. But my voice is suffering because of it. But they saw the lot come up for sale, and then they took what I consider a pretty lengthy due diligence period to make sure that this was a lot that would work. And what they ran into was construction signed off on it, said that, yep, this would be doable. Surveyor went in, did a survey, but what happened is the surveyor made a mistake and labeled it, I believe, as R2 instead of R1, which led them to believe they would have 10-foot setbacks, and instead it was 15. So after they purchased the property, they learned that unfortunately what they thought they could build and what they contracted Mr. Hurt to put together wouldn't be possible on the lot based on the setback setbacks that were in place. So thinking creatively about that, they first thought about a variance, but that wasn't exactly the right tool because what they also knew is that it is possible to build on the lot, and we actually had our architect look at what that alternative would be, and we're going to show you some of that today. But unfortunately, it wasn't something that really they felt fit with the neighborhood. In order to fit within those setbacks, they were looking at what would need to be likely a three-story house instead of a two-story. There are a number of different concerns that go into that, but as we point out, we'll show you why we felt this was preferable and what they're promising to sort of give up in return for the flexibility on the setback, which is the nature of conditional zoning. You all are able to put some conditions on the property in return for getting the flexibility on the setback was to build the smaller house shorter in height and also do some landscaping buffers, which will show you where those would be located on the property. So with that, I'd like to throw up on the screen what we're talking about. So this is the home that's being proposed. Again, two stories, garages on the bottom floor. Our architect is here, as I mentioned, to answer any questions you have about the design features of the home. We also have our stormwater designer here so that you can ask questions about how the property is laid out and how we're approaching that. But this was, this is what we're looking to do from the front view. From a front sort of expanded standpoint, this is the front and rear, and one of the things we wanted to note is that because this is going to be setback into the hill and there's a retaining wall, while on the schematics you saw, you would look at the back of that and say, oh, that's the rear of the house. But what that blue line depicts is where the roughly, approximately, the retaining wall would be. And so what if you were standing up again, up gradient from the home, looking down on it, you would only see what is above the retaining wall, not below it. But we wanted to depict the entire wall so that you could see it from just evaluation purposes. That's also similar on the side. The top portion here. This is the side of the house that would be seen from the neighboring property. I think that's the Oliver's property. And then again, here, this is the side barrier property, and again, that blue line is depicting, you're not going to see anything that that's where essentially the roof is going to be, the retaining wall there, and you'd only see what is above it. And that sort of gets into why we're making this proposal as to presenting what is technically possible and wouldn't need any permission on the property. And that's the alternates. So what you can see here on the top is again, same proposal. Down here is what we could do with the setback. So essentially, if you're squeezing things from the side, you have to go up or down in order to essentially get the same square footage of the home, and keep in mind that the total square footage of this home is roughly 1,100 more. Is that right? 1,100? Yep, just about that. So not a big home to begin with. Again, a lot of front, the massing of this building is, it just feels larger from the road. That didn't feel consistent with some of the neighboring properties. Another view of that is, again, this is what is essentially extra in the what we're proposing above and what we would have to do if we don't get the flexibility. The other view here is from the side, and again, if we have to go up, by nature, you're going to have more windows. That's going to result in potentially more light intrusion onto neighboring properties, just sort of the result of having to do three stories versus the two. And then again, the rear, the top here is, as I already laid out, roughly what you would see from the back is above the blue line in what we're proposing being on the top depiction. What would be above the retaining wall if we do three stories is below that. And again, from the farrier side of the property, what we're proposing on the top, what would have to be with a three-story on the bottom. And again, to be clear, this is what can be done without any permissions from the Board of Adjustment, from the planning board. This can just be done as a right. So and we'll zoom in here. I provided a paper copy for everyone in front of you if you want to follow along, or if it's easier to read there. But what our request is essentially the green area here. The dotted line above it would be the 15-foot that is required within the R1 zoning district. That green area is the reduction that we're asking for. So that instead of it being 15 feet, it would be 10. I think Scott highlighted this as part of his presentation as well. If you're wondering, well, couldn't you do two and a half over here and two and a half over here? What we're running up to is the MSDsman on the other side. And so while you have your own 15-foot setback, MSD has their 15-foot easement, and speaking as someone who represents MSD, I can tell you that they're going to say, no. It's just not part of their, their processes. They're not really willing to accommodate that most of the time. So going two and a half feet on the other side really wasn't an option to make the lower profile building work. This time, I'd like to ask our architect, Maury, to come up and then sort of just talk to you about the design features of the home, answer it, and maybe I'll pause there. What questions do you have for me? We're also, we can go through the whole presentation and then answer questions at the end if you prefer. Okay, Maury?
Let's, I'm going to talk about the, the design of the house itself and our landscape architect, Hutch Kearns, after me is going to talk about the site. So I'll cover the, the design of the house first.
Maury, you're well-known to everybody, but would you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Maury Hurt, I'm the architect on the, on the project. I should have said that. Let's see, let's go to the, not the next page, but okay. Just to point out how this works in floor plan, as, as John said, the lower level is garage. By the way, in case anybody's wondering, that's not counted into the 1,100 square foot total. That's the finished represented by that number. But this just, this just shows how you really got the two single, single doors for vehicles, and then the stairs, the only stairs in the project at this point are exterior but covered. So you would, you would come through this door after you parked your car, come up to the main level. If you want to go to the next sheet there, John. And pretty simple layout, living room, dining room, kitchen, and then two bedrooms and a bath, two baths behind that. That's, that's really, it's a very simple layout. It was a, it was to get it into even with using the, what turned out to be the incorrect 10-foot side setback. It was, it was, it took some, some design effort to do that just to get it to work, but it would definitely be possible if we, if we have to go that route to make it five feet narrower and add a story. The stairs would likely be in this area. We'd have a different arrangement of bedrooms, especially, it'd be on the upper level. Let's go to the next sheet. Okay. These are probably pretty self-explanatory. I'm happy to answer any, any questions about, about the elevations. I don't know if there's any specific questions about materials or anything else, but happy to address those if there are.
You can just lean into your microphone.
Sit on. Okay. I have a question. Since I'm not, I don't know a lot about retaining walls, structure, how you build them. When you build the retaining wall, what do you have to do under the ground before you build it?
There's a concrete footing under the ground. It's, it's called a cantilever retaining.
Okay.
And that's, but that's all below, right? You don't see any of that when it's finished.
How, how big is it?
Honestly, that's designed not by me, but by the structural engineers.
Okay.
And I'd have to look at the structural drawings to tell you that. I don't know exactly, but it's all, it's all under the, under the earth.
Okay. When they excavate that, do they have to kind of like go into the, do you understand what I'm asking?
They, they do have to create a void behind it that's then usually backfilled with gravel. What that does is it, it mitigates what's called hydrostatic pressure that comes inside of the wall with water that tries to move sideways essentially.
Okay.
And that tends to make it move vertically as opposed to horizontally.
So there would be some construction that would go on under the ground.
Yes, ma'am.
To make appropriate foundation for the wall. Okay.
That's right.
For the benefit of your question, the structural engineer has looked at this property and designed and sealed what we intend to do with the wall. So this isn't in a theoretical phase. It's been prepared by a structural engineer.
Correct. What other questions you guys have at this point? Let's go to the next sheet. Again, I think it's probably pretty self-explanatory. This is showing, this is showing that retaining wall. What happens is the grade continues up from here, and that's what John was pointing out, where as you're looking down, you don't see the retaining wall, which you might suggest the top of it, but it's essentially level with that grade. It's a little complex because it's, it's a sort of a three-dimensional thing, but the, the grade itself comes down. This is dug into it, and that's where the house is sat, or sits, is in that area that's dug out.
Can I interrupt you at that point? That was a question I had for later, and you touched on it, so I'll ask it now. I was as curious as how far above ground the retaining walls go on the upside.
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's not far, you know? I mean, probably less than a foot. It's enough, it's enough that you can keep the, the water from flowing right over it. So you have to have a little bit of what's called a swale behind it, channel the water around it, but it's not, it's, it's not significant.
I'll just go ahead and get it out there for future comments with people. That's the main question I've had.
Really?
Beginning, from the beginning is where the water flow would go when it hits that wall. Will it go toward the the Oliver's house, or will it go to the other side of the house?
That's a totally valid question, and I'll let, I'll let Hutch cover that with the site description.
I just wanted to get out there.
Yeah, that's a good question.
And, and the height above ground would impact that somewhat too, would it run over the wall? Obviously, maders don't want it to do that, so they want it to go around their house. That's just a basic question I had.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Hutch cover that when we get to that section in a minute. Is there any more? Yeah. Okay.
But I'm sorry, before you make that switch, have there been any substantial changes to these plans versus the ones that were presented to the Board of Adjustment?
Not, not substantial.
And we just want to highlight this for a second. The AS drawing that's in your packet would have indicated, and this is just a, it should have been corrected before. It was just an oversight on our part. Show.
This edge.
That showed coming up.
Showed it approaching into the MSD setback. That's not accurate. Mr. Vise, plant shed.
Set originally. We, we had already changed it, but the wrong drawing got included in the set originally. We updated it to the corrected drawing.
As I introduced Hutch Kearns. And so we really want to talk about one of the other aspects of the conditions we're willing to provide as part of, of the flexibility that comes through conditional zoning, which is the landscaping buffer. As I'd already indicated, while we could build up, we are offering to essentially cap that height at the lower level with the proposed building. The second part of the conditions we're willing to offer is a landscape buffer along that retaining wall so that again, neighboring properties where we had depicted, you would see the top of the home are going to see a vegetated screen instead. And I'll let Hutch talk a little bit about that, and then now would be a great time if folks have questions about any of the other aspects of the project from a sort of landscape architecture design to ask those. And then, but I also do want to clarify that we are at this point just applying for the conditional zoning approval. We still have to go through the stormwater approval, and that is a separate permit that we have to go through that Scott will have to review and, and that we would have to meet all of those standards as part of that process.
And I would imagine there are going to be some conditions related to stormwater that we would.
And, and, and I guess our response to that was, since we have not submitted that application, and we are committing to meeting all of the baseline stormwater standards, we're happy to have that conversation. I just wanted the board to be aware that, you know, that application is pending at this point.
You're, okay, go ahead.
If you could use the microphone.
And give your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Oliver. I live at 161 Mississippi. Did you design a home two stories within those setbacks?
Hold the microphone.
Just keep it within an inch or two of your mouth. Move, move. Thank you. Thank you.
I was asking, hurry, if he could design a two-story home within the setbacks that are the 15-foot.
Yes. And it would meet all the, all the statutory requirements.
My next, yeah, thank you. My name is Hutch Kearns. I'm a landscape architect here in North Carolina. I live up the street, practice in Asheville, western part of the state. We're engaged with maders as their landscape architect, and we've been working with Maury to site the house and do a site plan, landscape plan, road control, eventually stormwater, and basically place all the elements on the site. So I just thought I'd give you a quick review of why the house is where it is. And as you know, if you've been by there, it's an uphill orientation, so the road's below the house. And the house is sitting right at the front setback here. There's a, a column that comes down right on the setback, and the house is laid out. It's a very skinny lot, narrow, I should say. And so the house is sitting as close to the front as possible. And from a grading standpoint, we're coming up on, with a driveway as fast as, as steep as we can to be safe without, you know, it's very short, but we're trying to get up into the garage, which is on the main, the lower level. So essentially, the house is sitting as high as it can without the driveway being too steep, if that makes sense. The result is that, you know, the, the site continues to climb. These are two feet. is that, you know, the the site continues to climb. These are two feet contours. And so the result, as you saw in the elevations, is the site wall behind it. So the in a way, the house is tucked in to the hillside, and the site wall holds back the earth from the top side. The highest point on the wall is this corner, and then it it tapers down to zero as it as it follows the grade. That's conceptually what what's going on from a site standpoint. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And what we've talked about is, and I'll just reiterate, this wall is really only seen from below or from the interior of this house. There's a there's a six or eight foot. I think it's a little wider back here. I want to say that's ten feet between the building wall and the face of the site wall. But from the top from these two angles, the wall is we usually put them six inches above grade. So the mulch would cover would cover it. And then in between the property line and the wall, we're proposing a landscape buffer. So if you remember those elevations that showed the wall, you know, a six or eight foot tall evergreen native plant in that along that green line would essentially screen the house from if you were standing here or here.
Would they be six or eight foot when they're planted or they would grow to six or eight feet?
We haven't designed it yet. I'm just saying, if I stood there and you were above me, you'd probably see the roof, the top of the roof, but you wouldn't see. And I, you know, I don't have any specs on what they are at this point.
The reason I ask, and I'm thinking, and certainly the homeowners will know that I assume a pretty big drop if someone were to step over that. And certainly, no one should be on the property. It doesn't know that. But I'm just curious as to how that works from a safety standpoint. And that's a question for the architect or somebody else.
We we've had varying, it's a code issue and sort of varying municipalities have different different interpretations of what's required. We've done walls out in the landscape, which don't require a fence or a guard. And some inspectors think it should. So we don't know that yet until we've we've turned in for building permit. You may have more.
That's a really good question. Typically, if it's kind of a fine point, if the retaining wall like this is connected to the house, then it's part of it. This is completely separate, so it's not considered part of the structure. Therefore, you don't have the railing requirements like you would have on a house. Not say, you know, it might be might be something to think about because of what what you pointed out. But it's not going to be required by code because of that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So tell me again, how high is it from the top to the bottom on the house side of it? Of the wall?
So back in this corner, I believe it's fourteen feet between from top of wall to the new finished grade. And it's zero and as it it tapers down to zero at the ends both sides.
Thank you.
How much? How many feet are between the structure and the retaining wall?
The house structure?
Yes.
I I want to say it's six feet here and ten feet here. I don't recall. I can check. We did this in 2019, so maybe I'm but it's about that. About six or eight, ten feet.
I'm curious, even though it wouldn't be on the side of the retaining wall, is there any plan for the neighbors on the opposite side or because the house will be higher, correct, from where the present the neighbor's home is? This house is higher. Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't know the elevation. You're talking about the neighbor to the east.
The Olivers on the other side?
I don't think it's higher. I think the finished floor is probably similar. They have a driveway going up.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you go back to the site plan. Sorry, I'm not sure who's controlling that. Can you zoom out a little bit? So this tree, if if you've seen the site plan, is a large oak. And I would bet that's about the same elevation as the top of their driveway. And it's about the same elevation. We're not touching the ground around it. So I would I would bet that within a foot or two.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the work that's going to be done to preserve that tree?
Yes, generally, we're not doing any grading or construction work around the tree and protecting the root zone during construction. Specific measures, I I could get into something some we've done on other projects. But generally, we're 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 hands off in that area.
Is this an appropriate time to, are you the one to ask about the stormwater and how it's going to flow and what you're doing with that?
Sure. And maybe you already intend to do that. I was intending to answer questions if you had any.
Yeah, sure.
So.
Follow me up on my question. Thank you, Bill. About the drainage and water, rainwater runoff.
Sure. Generally, all the water is coming. You can see how the topography is draining here. And right down in the road, there's a a catch basin. And it the whole site really drains to this point. Conceptually, that we're doing the same thing. We're just putting a house in between where it wants to go. And so the drainage will come to the top of the wall and split and go around both sides of the house with swales and or underground pipe.
That I think so. That's an important issue. Yeah.
And could you describe what a swell and a catch basin is?
Absolutely, yeah. Okay. So a swell is basically a conveyance in at the ground level, and it can be anywhere from three inches deep. But it's a it's a way for water to go. Another way of saying in this case.
A pretty ditch.
It can, they can be very pretty. Yes.
It's a technical term.
Technical. I'll get you a spec on pretty and then we can talk about it. But but generally, like I said, you see how the topography is all going this way. And then it gets into this basin. It's at the edge of pavement. So what we're doing is we're swaling around the site and and providing some catch basins, which are basically a pipe with a box and a grate, right? And on a residential scale, we're not talking twenty four inch pipe and sort of road scale. And but the the drainage will get slowed down at the top of the site. And what we're trying to do with the pipes is make we're taking a steep site and leveling it, if you will. So all this water, we're trying to slow down in the pipe. And there's a small swell that runs to here and around the house. We've also got a swell below the wall so that we're making sure that water that falls here and or on the roof has is a way to convey it around the house. And and it all ends up in the same place that it's ending up now.
How do you assure that it doesn't go on the property to the east?
Well, with the well designed swell, I guess the way to say it, you know, right now, the pattern of drainage is running across here. I I don't know that all of it goes to this basin, but it it will when we build a house. Because it because some water probably comes across here with the tree, and we're not trying to do any work around the tree. There wouldn't be a way to keep a portion of this that's already going there from going there.
I'm like back for a second. Under the current conditions that, you know, vacant lot, rainwater is currently channelizing from this direction down in that direction. Just natural way of the way. There's nothing about this project that's rechanalizing that to increase stormwater going on to the neighboring properties, correct?
That's very.
Aspect of this project.
Are you listening?
This this project actually will decrease the water that ends up on the Oliver property versus the other way around because it is now having to be put into a piping system that will then go down to the road. So I'll let.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Is there a specific question related to it? Because what I what I can't say is there's there's a slope above both houses. I can't say that we're eliminating all water that would go to a neighbor. I could pretty confidently say on this one we can because we're below it, so from a gradient grade standpoint. But I guess the best way to say it is this house and the development of the site will the stormwater will be taken care of because the law says we have to, correct? Yeah. And and good neighborly practice, I would also admit. You know, we normally don't try to take stormwater onto the neighbor's property. To that point, all the stormwater exits down here. There's not like a exit point for any of this onto the neighbor, the neighboring property.
One other thing that I I want to point out so the board knows, we shared these plans with the Olivers and everyone else during the community meeting, and we said if you've got concerns, we'd love to talk and stormwater came up. We said that we'd love to talk with your stormwater engineer or someone you have that tells us that these plans won't do what, you know, professionals have signed and sealed as as the design features of the stormwater. And today, we've gotten no response from anyone to take up that offer or to give us anything that would show us that somehow we've designed this incorrectly in a way that would increase the stormwater. And I just want to make sure the board's aware of that and that we and that's analogous.
You and I had discussed that that y'all had discussed with Mr. Oliver, and I see he's got his hands on it. I want to call him just a minute. Could so y'all do need some further work on making sure that it is going to be consistent and compatible with what Mr. Oliver is a little concerned about.
Well, I I think the best way I can put it is we've shown our plans. He's expressed concerns. But they're not concerns that we've been able to verify are going to materialize. I think is the best way I can say it. I I think someone said, well, I'm worried about the stormwater. And we said, well, show us what is the problem with the stormwater system we've designed? And the answer has been there is no answer. So I I understand that Mr. Oliver has concerns, but we can only react to something that is shown to us in a professional context on how we might change this or redesign it in a way to address a problem that we don't think exists. As we already said, we think it's going to decrease the stormwater going on the property, not increase it. And and we don't think that there's really a problem, but we understand his concern. That's the best way.
And Mr. Oliver, would you like to ask any questions at this point?
On this picture here, you talk about this up here. This stormwater drain is uphill. How are you getting water? How are you getting water to go uphill? The drain is up here in the street. Right here. So you are you piping underground and putting in here or you just? It's an underground pipe.
So this plan, again, this is 2019. We've added up another catch basin. This is the catch basin in the street. We've added another catch basin here, which can be designed to further slow down the water. And then we're piping into the one that's in the street. This is a low point on the site. So it's let's see, the lower level is more, do you remember is it five oh six? I think it's five oh six. The the drain is at five hundred. So the garage level is six feet above that basin. So all this is above that. That's a low point.
As far as addressing these things, John, we were at the neighborhood meeting. Several of the neighbors, Emery was here and Mike Schongenberg was here, he was concerned about drainage. Yes, it wasn't professional, but that that's not us to do, it's for you to do. Thing you are, but we're addressing more water than that. So I I don't understand why you said they aren't concerned. I'm not concerned with the water to my house, which I will address on my letter shortly. But yeah, so I don't.
I I don't think I said the neighbors weren't concerned. I said that you all expressed concern and what our.
And let's don't have an argument on the floor.
I want to address the stormwater because I think that's what the board members are asking questions about. And and for clarity's purposes, as I'd indicated, that came up during the community. And what we have put together is a steel drawing by a licensed professional saying this addresses those concerns. We are not channelizing additional water onto the neighboring property. In fact, we're going to diminish it. The condition on the Oliver property will be better from a stormwater standpoint after than it is now in the natural condition. That is what the best information we have from our professional tells us. What we offered to the neighbors was, if you think we're wrong, we want to fix it. But we need information that is useful from a professional standpoint to design a system that addresses your concerns or substantiates that those concerns are going to materialize. I don't, I'm not trying to say Mr. Oliver is I guess the best way to say is we disagree about whether this is actually a problem. We think our system addresses that. We know it will have to when it goes through the stormwater process. If that's, we don't get a CO to put anybody in the house if it doesn't meet the stormwater standard. But the fears that have been articulated, we don't believe will materialize based on the professional advice that we've gone to the expense to get. If that answers your question.
Scott, let me ask you, how you, how does this get evaluated when it comes to the town? Do y'all have your own?
So there is a, so the town has a stormwater ordinance and essentially the applicant files a stormwater permit application. And as part of that, they're demonstrating pre and post stormwater conditions for a one inch twenty four hour storm. So that's the standard that they're needing to demonstrate that they're meeting. Essentially, you know, they're providing calculations of runoff pre and post construction and demonstrating capturing the, you know, capturing and treating the first inch in a given storm.
Well, suppose Mr. Oliver comes in and says, well, he doesn't think that's enough. Do y'all have a do y'all have a an engineer that you use to help evaluate whether this system is going to do what it says?
No, the 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 current process that the town has is that a landscape architect or or, you know, the given applicant in a given project provides that information and demonstrates that it's meeting the criteria in the stormwater.
So that becomes your judgment.
It becomes my, it becomes my judgment to review the criteria that they're submitted, but neither myself nor anyone with the town is actively performing the calculations. The burden of proof is on the applicant or their their agent or engineer.
And those standards, you know, Mr. Kearns is a licensed landscape architect. They have professional standards which regulate what they put in front of the zoning administrator, and it's his license that's on the line. If he's doing it wrong or doing something, if anyone had concerns that he's trying to slide one by, I don't think anybody does, but that's not going to happen either. The standards regulate what he has to produce, and that's the plans that he's put together now. And obviously we don't take this lightly.
Just for my benefit, being a non expert, Mr. Kearns, could you walk us through this and the specifics of this drainage system, where the waters can go underground, what size the piping is, the flow? Explain some of the terms such as eight inch sock pipe, check dams and so forth that I'm afraid mean nothing to me. I just want to understand how you're going to do what you just said. It's wanted to.
Sure. I'll do my best. So I I'll go back. I'll turn the clock back just a bit. When we first started this project in 2019, I believe the ordinance was fairly new. Is that right, Scott?
Well, the conditional zoning ordinance is brand.
Not that one, but the stormwater.
The the stormwater ordinance, to my knowledge, has been around, I believe, since 2008 and was last updated in 2010. So it's give or take.
So when we we first talked talked to zoning, the standard was the the BMPs or the best management practices, which include the check dams and the under drains and and swales and things like that had to be on the plan, but there was no sort of calculation standard. And the advice, the direction we got was you guys are the experts. You tell us what what. advice, the direction we got was, you guys are the experts. You tell us what would work. I can say that on a house five times this size, wouldn't normally do this much in terms of those BMPs, those best management practices. So I'm confident that it will meet the code. But we haven't done yet, because I don't believe it was existed at the time, or the direction we got, didn't include that, was this one-inch, 24-hour. So we've yet to do those calculations. So I hesitate to tell you what the whole system's going to be because I think the calculations are going to dictate what we have to do. That's the standard we have to meet.
And I just wanted to ask you to talk a little bit about how literal construction can impact how you might have to make changes to the system based on if you hit rock or something like that. There's just the, talk to the board about how there may have to be changes.
Sure, sure. One of the big wild cards we don't know right now is the soil capacity or its ability to handle stormwater. So as we go through construction, those measures, those BMPs may have to change. However, we still need to meet the standard that's in the code. So this is a variety of measures that we're using. I'll just kind of walk through it. So as you come down the hill, this measure here, this sock pipe is basically a French drain. With a big pipe, an eight-inch pipe would be large for what's happening above it. If there's no construction, it's handling stormwater well. Why we've run it across contour like this is to slow the water down as it comes off the hill. Then.
Can I enter it real quick? I'm sorry. You were talking earlier about you couldn't disturb the land in the easement area. Let you show in a part of that sock pipe over there and some of the drainage down below as well. Do y'all have permission MSD to do that in their easement area?
I don't believe we've applied for any permits with MSD. Yeah.
Drainage is allowed in their easement area. Okay.
Right, sorry. And I'll just, let's back up just a second. So this heavy line here is our limits of construction. Right? It's basically, and as you notice, we're scooping around that tree. So this contour that runs across here, we're grabbing it and we're making sure that there's a swell four feet from the house, and we're not touching the ground outside of that line. That's the case, basically within the drip line, you know, the root zone of that tree. So all that's going to be running down here is probably a four-inch to six-inch swell. So the water is conveyed down to sort of a more intense system as it gets down towards the bottom.
So just to show my ignorance, the swell is keeping it on the westerly side of the swell itself, not going over toward the Oliver side. Is that, in other words, it's like this, and Oliver's over here, and it's just going to that side of the swell?
Well, I, the way it's designed, it'll convey right down this line right here.
That's what I meant.
Right. Yeah, so.
That's above ground, right?
It is. Yep.
So it's French drain into pipe into swell past the tree. And then, and then what?
Yeah. And then I was going to point out too, at each, pretty often, and again, more often than we would normally do even on a road, we're putting these check dams in, which is basically a permanent stormwater measure that slows the water down during a storm event. And eventually, it'll come this way, but some of it'll sit there for an afternoon or a period of time.
It's like a little dam that backs water up behind it.
Exactly. Yep.
What is it, what is it made out of?
I would imagine natural landscape stone. You'll see it on roadsides, but it's riprap. You know, that's not what we're suggesting at a house. Let me add this too. So during construction, there's temporary control. So we want to make sure that nine months or a year, what's the build time, Maury? During that period when the house is under construction, where some of these measures will be temporary, and then they'll turn into permanent stormwater measures. So let me continue on this side. So this swell comes down, and this basin is put in, and basically, what we've been doing a lot lately now is just a vertical pipe that has a grate on top of it. And we're creating a small little retaining wall made out of boulders, a landscape feature really, to store some water above the wall. Again, it's kind of a dam.
And that's still permitted by the sewer.
We don't want you putting something to grow in our easement that could grow into our pipes. And we don't want you something, putting something on top of the pipes that would make us difficult for us to get to. But they will accommodate encroachment into their easements as part of the permitting process. And most of what's been discussed is it's been above ground. Those check dams, that's not below ground, that's above ground. But that's part of a process we go through with them. But putting the house over the easement is a hard no. Putting, for example, if there, a screening buffer in that is generally a hard no, particularly if the root systems could grow into the pipes and then become a maintenance issue for MSD. If that helps answer those questions in general. But they will accommodate some things within the easement.
And my understanding is there's an application process for that with MSD. You mentioned something about an application. What does that entail? Or is, am I, is this?
I don't want to give the wrong information. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head every aspect of MSD's process to approve that. But keep in mind, as part of this approval and conditional zoning, if you were to say, yes, we want this, we have to do this in order to build the house. If we can't do this, we have to come back and ask for some relief from that. So there's not a situation where we can promise to do it and then wouldn't have to actually have it built on the home. If MSD comes back and says, well, that's not going to work for us, then we'll have to work, come back and ask for some kind of accommodation and present a new plan that would address the stormwater at that point. But we don't have concerns about that in general, Scott.
I can just speak briefly to that. So MSD does have a right-of-way division that very, very often consults on either individual home build sites like those for larger projects where there is, you know, any possible question of an easement. So it could certainly make an inquiry or present the information to the right-of-way division, just to verify that there's no concern from MSD.
And one of the things that we've already been, it's not as though we haven't been in communication with MSD. The mators have already agreed to replace 80 feet of MSD's pipe in that easement as part of this development process. So they understand what we're looking to do. We are doing something in exchange for them as part of that. I cannot represent that we have full approvals from them, but they are aware and are getting a pretty good benefit and the replacement of a large section of pipe as part of this process too.
Since you mentioned. Heard you said that another condition that certainly will impose something related to this. That will be acceptable to y'all. Now, I know you don't know what the condition would be, but in a generic sense, that you can expect that to be.
I think we would have to know what that is from a specific standpoint. A generalized condition is almost impossible to agree to because you don't know whether you can meet the standard or not. So if the board, and again, we'd encourage the board to think about, you know, generally, conditions in conditional zoning relate to the accommodation you're asking for. So if you're asking for a five-foot setback reduction, general conditions around that go, well, that's going to leave less space between you and the neighboring property. So maybe screening is the right way to address the impact of the flexibility we're giving you. Conditions generally are not strapping on additional requirements that no other home would have to meet within the town simply because we have this as a vehicle to do that through. So we would respectfully request that the conditions be tied to the impact of the flexibility we're asking for. It's just the appropriate mechanism, and I'm sure Scott can talk about more about conditional zoning in general, about how that give and take works. But I think even the ordinance, and I think I've got a slide of it, talks about how those conditions are supposed to be tied to the impact. A setback reduction has nothing to do with stormwater. So increasing the stormwater requirements because we're asking for a side setback, I'm not saying it's something we couldn't agree to, but it doesn't seem tailored to the requests that we're making. And I'll let Scott add.
It's basically just, yeah, I mean, the question or the issue you're bringing up is the nexus between the, I suppose, the nature of the request and the impacts.
And I think you said earlier that if this setback request were not planned, that you would be able to build a house that you showed. And the same stormwater issues would be apparent with that, but there wouldn't be a condition for that.
Correct. We would meet the same standards, whether we're building the two or the three. We don't get out of the stormwater standards because we're going through conditional zoning at all. We have to meet them just the same. This is just an opportunity for us to give you all something. And what, and I think that's the question, part of the question is what is the town getting in response? Town is getting smaller, or should say shorter, lower profile building that is more consistent with the homes along the road. It's getting a landscape buffer it otherwise would not get along the retaining wall. And we're asking for in exchange the flexibility of the smaller setback. And we're happy to entertain other conditions that relate to the impact of a setback reduction. I think stormwater is, it would be the same no matter what. And it seems a bit unfair to tack on conditions unrelated to the flexibility we're requesting.
Just a quick question, more of my curiosity, I guess, than anything. Where is the 80-foot section of the pipe that's going to be replaced, the sewer pipe, located? And what impact will it have on that tree that everyone seems determined to save? Does anybody know exactly where it's, where it's going to be moved to or replaced or whatever?
And speaking to the microphone, I think it's a section above the house and a section below the house, and everything in between. So.
So it will replace that part that runs right by that big oak tree that everybody's.
And that's the special, the special work we're having to do to preserve the tree. And I might let Mike and Kathy talk about it. From the beginning, that tree has been, and preserving that tree has been a core component of what they wanted to design.
I've heard about it as well. So are they moving the pipe or just replacing?
It's a replacement of the pipe for 80 feet and behind a special landscape or a tree arborist. We talked to Will Blozen, who will monitor the digging around there. And they have a different technique, more expensive to protect the tree roots.
Yes, there's several things he will do. I mean, it has to do with fertilizer and just everything that's possible to do to protect the tree because we love the tree. I know the Olivers love the tree. So we've gone to that extra measure to make sure it's humanly possible the tree will survive. And that's basically what we've done.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the landscape?
So just to go back one last question, Mr. Kearns, that drawing that was up there, everything in blue is underground. That's helped for me. And if it's not in blue, it's above ground.
That's accurate.
So on the backside, the only thing in blue is the, that I wouldn't call it a sock pipe.
Yeah, we've got some underground pipe up here to connect all these. And we're keeping water away from this wall. We're pitching it back and we're getting it into a small system.
And then, and then, for example, and I think Julie touched on this, and I didn't realize at the time. So where it comes across the sock pipe comes underground to a certain point, then it goes back above ground all the way down the side over there in the soil.
From here to here. Yes, that's correct.
I just wanted to have it clear in my mind.
Yeah.
And understanding that you're certainly going to meet the requirements, if for some reason it was insufficient, I mean, what is the, what is the option? If it was insufficient, stormwater overwhelmed it, and that was a regular occurrence, what would you recommend as a, as a adaptation of what was there?
There are a lot of factors, including the tree. Maybe widen this swell so that it can handle more volume. I don't think there's going to be a whole lot coming off the hill because of the nature of the woods above it. It absorbs quite a bit of water. There's no paving, no built environment. So this is sort of just an extra, let's make sure we're not taking that water and pushing it up against that wall and slow it down as well.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
Excuse me, go ahead.
It's a good question. Sometimes it's, okay, where's the problem? And how do we fix it? Once you see it, right?
In your measurements, did y'all measure how far it was from the property line on the west to the actual physical location of the house on that next door?
From like here to that house?
To the house.
I don't think we've ever measured that. It's, it's a good ways up the hill. The elevation certainly.
It's beyond the minimum setback, in other words.
Seventy?
Right, that's right. And on the east. Right. I noticed that when I was. But that's still up.
I had a question. Does, do any of the neighbors currently have a stormwater, any stormwater difficulty? Yes.
If anyone who is speaking, please just speak into the microphone for the purposes of the meeting.
I think he's going to make a presentation.
We may be able to, we're happy to answer all the questions the board has, but I also may be able to wrap up sort of our side of the presentation. I'm sure you want to hear from others and then give us an opportunity to.
And that's what I intend. But these questions have been helpful along.
Sort of put it all together, and I just want to highlight, this is, this is the action. I think when we're making decisions, it's important to use what the ordinance is as that guide star. And this is that ordinance at the end again, in exchange for the flexibility and the reduction and the setback specifically listed in the ordinance, is the kind of thing that's appropriate for conditional zoning reduction and setback, you all can place other conditions on that. And in case folks were wondering, this is that relationship that I was talking about. This is 510.32. Any such condition should relate to the relationship of the proposed use with the surrounding property. So what we're proposing to do is single family, the same as every other home on that street, my knowledge. And again, we're asking for the reduction in the setback, and the conditions should, at least under the ordinance, relate to that. Happy to answer any other questions you all might have. And we'll also hold back. One other thing, I know Maury wanted to sort of clarify an answer he had given to Mr. Oliver's question.
Thank you, John. If you could flip back to that sheet that shows the, there we go. Thank you. Mr. Oliver had asked the question is, could we design a home that's within the setbacks? And the answer is, yes, we can. What we can't do, and as I've mentioned in my earlier presentation, it was a real challenge even working with what we thought was a 10-foot side setback to make this work with the number of bedrooms that the mators need, which is two. If we made it narrower, you'd have to cut it down to one bedroom, or what would actually happen is we'd have to go up a floor. Okay, so I'm calling this really a one-story house on a basement as opposed to two-story. It is two stories technically, but the lower level is not living space. You got one level of living space and a basement garage. This would have two levels of living space and a basement garage, if that makes sense. But this would be within the 15-foot side setback on both sides.
So I think the short, clean way of also putting that is, yeah, again, if we get squeezed in between, it just requires a smaller home that may only have one bed. And again, I think this is why we're asking the flexibility. I think most folks would like to have. And and again, I think this is why we're asking the flexibility. I think most folks would like to have more than one bedroom in their home in case someone comes to visit or wants to come and learn about Montreat or come in for a music training or conference or something like that. So while it is possible, I don't think it's ideal and wouldn't be for most folks who are going to be building a brand.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant side? Okay, let's move on to any community participation. And Mr. Oliver, would you come forward?
House, could you not change that? Two car garage to square footage?
I didn't understand what you said.
Could they change that two car garage which into square footage is a simple thing off my mind. There's a lot of, I don't have a garage and there's a lot of people that don't have a garage, so that's.
In other words, eliminate the garage?
Yes.
Have y'all considered that? Well, let's let them finish. Once you finish.
I'll read because I'm a little nervous. My name is Mark Oliver. My wife and I have resided at one sixty one Mississippi Road Extension since twenty eighteen. Home borders the applicant's property located at one fifty nine Mississippi Road Extension. The applicants have made applicant for a conditional zoning amendment to reduce a side yard setback from fifteen to ten to construct a new residence, as you know. This is not the first time that the applicants have made an effort to change the side yard setback to build the residence of their choice. The applicants had previously made application for a variance to achieve the goal before the Board of Adjustments back in September twenty twenty. At that hearing, the applicants provided testimony to support the very same request as they do now. The applicants had their, and I apologize.
Just back them all down there.
Sure. Thank you.
We need one more.
The applicant had their surveyor testify to the fact that he performed the survey upon with which the architect replied, relied upon the preparation of the plans on the residence they wished to build. The surveyor testified and admitted that he had prepared a survey that was in error as it related to the side setbacks. The surveyor neglectingly reported the side yard setbacks for ten feet and not the correct side jobs fifteen feet. Evidence at that hearing clearly showed that the applicant's architect detrimentally relied upon the survey and prepared the plans for the home in accordance with the enormous determination by the surveyor. The applicants requested a variance to allow the residence as designed to go forward. The board heard the evidence, which clearly showed that the home could be constructed upon the land that would comply with the zoning, but not one as set forth in the architectural plans submitted. Based upon testimony given at the hearing, questions by the board and the answers provided, it became clear that the requirements for the granting of the variance could not be met. At that time, the applicants withdrew their application for the variance. The application applicants now are requesting the exact same relief that they were unable to obtain before the variance hearing. Applicants have provided no legitimate reason that they don't wish to follow our zoning. The conditional zoning request the applicants now have before this body acknowledges they could construct a residence accordance with the zone, but would prefer to build a residence not in conformity with the current zoning. It is unfortunate that the surveyor improperly reported reporting of the side yard setbacks have caused this issue. And applicants have architectural plans that do not allow such a dwelling to be built. The question is, what are the zoning regulations for if not to be required to be followed? What is the condition applicants have placed upon their property to allow this request to be granted? Preference or desire to proceed contrary to existing zoning should not be valid or consideration. In addition to clear noncompliance with zoning, there are additional considerations and concerns that would accompany the granting of the relief requested by the applicant. There is a forty eight inch diameter live oak tree that shares the boundary between my property and the applicant's. The availability of the tree is questionable based upon the applicant's drawing and the nearness the root structure is to the construction that would take place in that immediate area. Monetary damages would be considerable to take down such a large tree. Should a ten thousand dollar fund be set up and held by the city for two years as conditioned for any relief applicants could possibly receive? The fund would be designated to be sent to the, take the tree down or provide an arborist to care should it or any part of that tree fall within a fail within that time period. The funds would be returned to applicants if no issue arises in the end of the period. The applicant's plans also show concerns for the tree, but provide no specific details to save the tree's life. The drainage impact of building the residence is proposed is also concerning, as indicated. Myself and and wife, as long as time as residents are quite familiar with the downslope drainage in the area. Above my home, there is a twelve inch drain line within a swell of three, I didn't write that, regular maintain, I regularly maintain this. Even with that size of drain and maintenance, the hillside drainage has put excess water on my opposite neighbor's property. The applicant's property has a similar hillside. The applicant's plan provides for an eight inch drain above the above the home at the bottom of the hillside and French drains near my boundary. There are no details as to volume or construction detrimental consequences of excess drainage from that area adversely affecting my property could be very costly and effectively, excuse me, affect proper property value, sorry, movement. Should those concerns be addressed as conditioned to any relief granted at the applicants? Drainage concerns on opposite side of the applicant proposed residence are even more exaggerated due to the request of ten foot side yard as shown in applicant plans. Applicant proposes plans appears to have a drainage line dumping onto the neighbor's property, not all the way to the applicant's proposed rain yard and along the street. What conditions are protection could be placed to protect the neighbor from adverse effects and property value evaluation? There appears to be a fifteen foot utility easement between my property and the applicants. What conditions of granting applicant's relief would assure that that the utilities to our home would not be relocated or affected and no expense borne by us? The sewer is also within that easement. But what conditions would be in place to protect from damaging and essential utility? This is very concerning to me. For all the above reasons, the purpose purpose conditional zoning should not be granted as the applicants are not barred, barred from building within the current or barred from building within the current zoning requirement but under a structure as they admit in their application. The preferred plans are a violation of zoning and advocate should be required to buy them. And at the end, so it was it was stated by the architect that he could build a two story home. They prefer not to. And that's it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Oliver, I understand. So you would prefer that they build a three story house within the fifteen foot setback than a two story with the ten foot setback?
Well, the way I feel about variances and when they, in nineteen eighty five, when they put these fifteen foot variances in, they did it for stormwater, for drainage and for things like that to help the neighbors because, yes, some of them are eight feet, some are five, some are on the line. But they had to go to that point. And I feel, yeah, it's not the greatest thing for me. But my neighbor does not, you know, prefers it not to intrude on her and it's her right as well. And is it going to bother me that it's three foot, two foot? I mean, two stories, three foot? Not really. You're taking out the trees and there's nothing there anyway. So I prefer the barriers that the zoning ordinance be intact. Yes.
Even those, those stormwater issues would be the same. Even though the stormwater issues would be the same.
They, they, yeah, yeah, because they are responsible. As he said, these guys are all licensed and all the other things. If it comes in my house, then I, you know, that's not good. I don't think they would design a house, even if they had to go to two to three story house to hurt my home. But, you know, right now, if you, and several of them did visit my site and it's, it's nothing like the pictures was really good, but it just, the water flows heavily. And at one stage, just so you know, I'm the second owners of the home built in fifty four, and I had a brother come by who was seventy five years old, helped build this house. And behind my house is a three foot ditch that was never there in nineteen fifty four. It is today. It was not hand dug. It was trenched through. The water used to flow around both houses. But God made it so it flowed between us. Unfortunately, it goes next to her and, you know, the setbacks should have been done, but yes. That's long story short, I'd rather have it within zoning than than this house. Yes.
Other question? That's okay. We appreciate it very much. I'm wondering if Ms. Ferrier, Stephanie, is she on the Zoom? Is she?
Yes, I'm here.
Josh, can you talk? Because I would really appreciate it. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much. Shall I go ahead then?
One moment, we're just adjusting the audio, audio visuals. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Is this better now?
How far away are you from the microphone?
I've got my mic right here.
Just, just talk as loud as you can.
Sorry, we're having issues here in the town hall with the audio system.
Is it, is it being worked on or can you hear now or? Not really.
It's being worked on.
If you can just hold on for just one moment, I believe our tech guy is checking on that.
Okay, testing the mic now. Is that any better?
I just got word from the tech. He's advising that you just speak as directly as you can into your microphone and we will listen as best as we can hear the, I believe the speakers are in flux right now, but we, we can hear you. So if you can just speak as loudly and directly into the mic as you can.
Okay, is this, is this audible right now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll raise my, I tend not to raise my voice, but I will for purposes of the meeting. Thank you so much for making this open to the public for public comment. I'm Stephanie Ferrier and my husband and I own the property at one fifty seven Mississippi Road. And the Ferriers, we've been Montreeters since the nineteen thirties. And I grew up visiting my grandparents in their home on Assembly Drive and my aunt and uncle on Westminster and my aunt on Mississippi when she passed. It's her home that that we now have. And so before I get started, I actually have a question. Because I just want to make sure I a hundred percent understand one aspect of what's being proposed. And I was hoping to be able to share my screen. Can the tech person?
I didn't hear that.
Like to be able to.
To share her screen.
Share a screen just to show one image from the architectural drawings to ask a question? Can the tech person? No, no, this would be to to show, to bring up an image on the screen of one part of the architectural drawings.
If you, if you can hold on for just one moment, I'm going to see if the tech can correct both the audio and the screen display.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Stephanie, say something.
Sorry, we're just doing the audio.
Oh, excellent. Wonderful. Yes.
I'm sorry, Josh. What were you saying about a screen share? Okay, so I've been informed by the tech that currently there's no way that you can share your screen, at least in the setup that is currently set up.
Okay.
Sorry, one of the commissioners has a question.
Curious, Stephanie, is the architectural drawing that you wanted to show us something we would have here in our material? Okay, well, yeah, I figured I would just describe then. It's, it's actually, so the more, it's from the more detailed drawings that were originally submitted to the, to the board. You know, the one that has what, five or six pages?
If you'd like to reference the sheet number, the applicant's development team mentioned that they can pull it up on screen.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Whoa, where do I find this sheet number? Oh, there we go. Yes, I got it.
Right hand corner.
L one point oh three.
Okay, just give a moment, please. Okay, we've got that up on screen and I believe the believe that's up on screen now. So.
So it would, yeah, it does require, I mean, obviously zooming in because there's so much detail here. So my question relates to the part of the drawing sets right adjacent to our property line. And it shows there is the retaining wall. And then on the left hand side, the word drainage appears right below drainage. It says drainage swale drainage. I guess they all say drainage swale. So it's the middle of those three drainage swales. Now each designation of drainage swale shows a line going over to the right. And the middle one appears to show a drainage swale that lies between the retaining wall and the property line. And so my question is in it looks, and I realize this might not be the case, just how things are depicted, but it looks as though this would require digging into the hill right up to my property line. So digging away, you know, y'all, I'm sure y'all have visited the property and that's a very steep part of the slope. So they would be digging in right up to my property line to put the swale in and then put the retaining wall. So that's why you can see why I just wanted clarification of what's being planned.
Can you, can you explain that? Yes, he's going to do that.
Hi there. Yes. So the the swale on top of the wall, when we, when those walls are designed, we don't want water to flow over the top of them. So it's, it's a very small swale just to keep, keep any runoff that's coming onto the property away from the top of the wall. So it'll, it'll drain down to the system below the house.
Sort of a French drain kind of thing then?
Along your property line, no, it'll be just a a swale, a ditch that's a foot away from the wall or so.
And her question, undoubtedly, there's no water coming on her property from that swale. The intention of the design. It's definitely below your property because your, your property flows onto this one. So.
I think she's concerned about digging out. If you were digging out any into her wall, that might weaken her steep bank there in any way at the bottom. Is that not correct? Is that, that's what I understand the question relate to. Is that correct, Seven?
Yes, you've got it. Mm-hmm.
The, the retaining wall has been designed by the structural engineer who's addressed that concern. That's part of the system that he has designed to ensure that that will not result in any slope instability as part of the construction process. Um, and if you, I'll let Maury correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if we're, we're looking here, this gray bar is the retaining wall. Okay? And that retaining wall is going to be nested right up against the, for lack of a better technical term, the dirt on the other side. Correct, Maury? So you still have space between the property line here and where the digging will occur to put in the retaining wall here. So there will not be digging onto Ms. Ferrier's property as part of this. And I think, uh, Hedge addresses, but this is controlling water coming off of Ms. Ferrier's property onto the major property.
Right. Thereby creating a ditch for that water to normally, I mean, without, without all of this, they, the water would just keep flowing down the hill, right? But now there'll be a, a barrier stopping that water. And so the water rushes up to the barrier. Normally it would go, but of course, obviously you don't want it to go into the house, the new one. So it goes up to the barrier and then down. So all of that water then, that'd have to be a pretty serious swell to not then end up digging out, you know, as, as, uh, as, as water does. That's how the Grand Canyon was formed, you know, to, uh, to, you know, keep digging out, uh, into the hillside some more.
I think they're concerned.
I can't tell if someone's speaking because there's no.
Yeah, they're concerned now that he's coming up now.
Yeah, I just wanted to address, um, so the, the wall is sort of designed, uh, with, with the swell above the wall. It has two layers of, uh, drainage. So at the bottom of the wall, on the backside of it, it's buried. There'll be a, a foundation drain. And then the, the backfill behind the wall is also made to drain. So anything that's coming off of your property onto this property, uh, in a normal, you know, we get those little light rains that last eight, 10 hours. It's not a big gusher, but it should take care of anything coming off the property. And again, similar to the, the water above the house, it's forested. There isn't a whole lot of water coming off of there naturally, uh, unless we have a massive rain event. Even so, the woods are, are doing their, their job in terms of, um, taking that runoff.
Pardon me for the interruption. Josh, can you close the window that's appeared on the screen, please? Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Uh, sure. I, I, I still have concerns, but you know, I'll, I'll address them later, but thank you. I was wondering about, about that. Now it does look as though they're digging into the hillside to build that swale is pretty, pretty close to the property line itself.
That, that's correct. In the, in the wall design takes that into account so that, uh, your property isn't compromised.
All right. Thanks. So I'll just, um, move on then to the, the statement. So, you know, even before I decided, uh, whether to submit remarks for the first hearing, um, back when, you know, I researched, would it, would it in fact be possible to build a dwelling on the site within, um, the setbacks that are required under the zoning ordinance? And what I found, what is not only possible, but there are many designs actually for, for such, um, size homes. And they're just lovely designs. Um, so we know, and it's been established and conceded that it's entirely possible to build a home within that, with, with that square footage even, you know, 1,100, 1,200 square feet, um, within the setback footprint and within Montre's height limit. And so they, they, you know, they, the, the land can be developed within the existing regulations without having to get any variances or special permissions or anything like that. So, well, what they've written in the, this latest application is, you know, they, they concede they can't, they could in fact build within the, the, the existing regulations, but they would prefer not to, they would prefer, um, a two-story structure, as they put it, that is consistent with the surrounding homes. And it seemed to be implying that a three-story structure wouldn't be consistent. Well, granted, on either side of, of that lot, you don't have a three-story structure, but right, right nearby you do. I'm just around the corner on Virginia, um, is a three-story sizable three-story home. And if you go up the other way up, Virginia, there's another three-story home. They don't have three-story homes on either side of them, but they don't look out of place at all. They don't look, and, and, um, there's another one over on Woodland right nearby also, another three-story. Which again, they don't seem out of place. In fact, one of the fun things about walking around Montreat is just looking at all the wonderful variety of homes. So I, I don't think that that, that should be a reason, um, for not complying with the existing, you know, setbacks, uh, setback regulations. And yes, it would entail a, a, a two-story home over the garage because they want to, you know, I understand they want to build over the garage and that doesn't count as the living space. So, um, it would be a three-story structure, but a two-story home over, uh, over the garage. But they, they still want to not go that direction. They want to go with just, uh, the one story above a garage. And that would require digging into the very steep hill on, you know, toward my property. That would require digging in there another five feet beyond what they're proposing. They are, what they are, actually what they are proposing is in order to build their preferred structure, it would require digging into that steep hill an additional five feet. And now someone posed the question, what is the slope of this property? And I had actually previously looked that up because I was wondering myself. Uh, and using the, the handy steep slope calculator that Montreat, uh, uses for its, you know, and its various application forms. Now, we know, uh, it, it does not require the hillside development permit granted. The hillside development permit is required if the average slope is equal to or more than 40%. So it's equal to or more than 40%, then this additional hillside development permit is required. The average slope of this lot isn't 40%, it's 37.95%. Okay, so 37.95%. So granted, the permit is not required per se, but the considerations that led to the, uh, development of the hillside development regs are certainly relevant in considering whether to grant this change to the setbacks. The, you know, Mr. Nor mentioned a setback reduction has nothing to do with the stormwater. And I suggest it has everything to do with stormwater. In this case, uh, we always pointed out that the stormwater regs are, what, about 12 years old now, I think, um, more or less. And they anticipate, you know, looking at a one-inch rain over 24 hours. Well, just last August, Montreat experienced, uh, when, when tropical storm Fred came through, it was nine inches of rain over two days. Nine inches of rain over two days. And then just, I don't know, because one week or two weeks later, it was after Fred, eight inches of rain in 24 hours. You know, these, these gully washers are, we just know they are becoming more and more, uh, frequent. And think about that, that slope right now. Well, the lot itself is basically a, a gully, if you will, right? And so what's been proposed is to place a dwelling, a, a, a barrier, a bear, so that, you know, comes down like this. Put at the barrier, i.e. a home there. It means all that, the water obviously has to go somewhere. And I understand there are some plans to put, uh, uh, swales and other drainage systems here and there. But given the increase in the number of storms, which are way more than one inch in 24 hours, um, I would suggest that it would not be wise to let this building go in place in a way that requires them to cut an additional five feet into a deep, uh, a steep slope. Just to build their preferred building when they could build a building without doing that. And they would, they would abide by existing, um, setback regulations. And so those, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Ferrier? Dan?
I don't have a question from Ms. Ferrier. I have a question for, I guess, Mr. Noir and his team. If you were to drop back to the house being 15 feet from the line, would that affect where the retaining wall is located?
No. And that's one of the things we plan on addressing each of these concerns that have been raised. The retaining wall is required, period. Two stories, three stories. Maury can talk more about that, but that was one of the reasons he came over to talk with me. The argument that somehow three stories doesn't require a retaining wall is just an act.
Um, I'm sorry. I just have to say something there. I never, I, I think everyone in the room knows that I never suggested there shouldn't be a retaining wall. And, and, and obviously I wouldn't, it would be quite dangerous, uh, to my property if there were not a retaining wall. I'm just suggesting the retaining wall does not have to be, um, smack up next to, uh, my property.
I think it's what she's saying is moving it over the five feet.
It, it, what would, the almost certain answer to that is that it could be, if we wanted to, you know, keep it only five feet from the house, but what's much more likely is we prefer to have, as it's in the back, a greater distance between the house and the retaining wall. The retaining wall, you know, doesn't intrude onto your property in any way. So it's, it's, uh, it's not problematic in, in any kind of, you know, legal sense. To be right where it's at. And that's, that's most likely where it would remain.
Right. And, and just your concerns about, uh, about erosion and all that sort of thing. So anyway, my concerns are on the record about the significant, in my view, potential for, um, erosion in light of the increasing violent, moving real gully washers in the last couple of years. So that's my concern. It's on the record now. Thank you.
And there's a question from one of the commissioners.
Um, hi, Stephanie. It's, hi. It's nice to meet you. Glad you could be here. Um, I do have a question that goes along with something I asked at the beginning about the retaining wall, just so I can understand the construction of it. And Stephanie brought up, and I heard the word backfill mentioned. So when you make a retaining wall like that on a hillside and, and you're doing the excavation, do you have to go farther than like, we're wanting this 10-foot?
Yeah, I think I understand.
Change. And, and so if you could explain that, because I know she's concerned, you know, that how, how far are you going to go and then backfill against the wall?
I can't tell you the exact distance, but I can tell you that it will not intrude onto her property. In other words, there is, you're right about the backfill. So, so you have to cut a little further in to put the footing in and also to put the formwork in to build the wall, right? Once the wall's poured, because it's poured concrete with steel reinforcing all through it, and the forms are removed, you, you backfill the, the gap between the wall and the soil with, with gravel typically. And then that, that lower drain that was mentioned is against the footing. And then there's the up, once everything's backfilled, that upper swale is created to catch the water coming down from Ms. Ferrier's property and channel it down the hill. Does that make sense?
That does. Thank you. And that, the wall would be at 10 feet, correct? But the excavation would need to go beyond a bit, beyond the 10 feet.
Wall's not 10 feet from the property line.
Okay, but the setback.
The setback's 10 feet, but the wall's within the setback. So it's a, it's about five and, five and a half.
Okay, that's what I mean. That's what I'm trying to ask.
So yeah, it's even on the backfill, there's not going to be any digging that goes across the.
Correct, correct.
It just abuts the property, I guess.
It's close to it. I don't, yeah, we wouldn't go right up to it because obviously we don't want to go over it. So there'd be a, there'd be a, you know, some sort of a, uh, a line at which they wouldn't go past and it would be inside the major property line.
Okay.
Just, just one point about what happens behind the retaining wall. The reason it's filled with gravel is so that it can drain. And so the retaining wall will have its own drainage mat against about one inch thick. And then it has the, the gravel. And so you basically have a 10-foot, uh, drainage cavity of the, of the gravel. So the swale is less important because most of the water is going down, uh, behind the, underground. Because it goes very easily to the gravel. And so it, it's a pretty effective way to handle a, a lot of water that's going to come on of, uh, of your property on theirs. And so it's, it's a win-win, uh, the engineering with, with the wall and then the amount of gravel that allows so much water to be carried away.
You don't know Wade. He is a contractor that does, has known on it. And you may know him.
I'm familiar with his name very much so, yes.
Right. Uh, before we get to anybody else, uh, John, if y'all want to make any further responses. Okay, do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Either on the Zoom or here in person? Any more questions at this point?
I have a question for, I think for the zoning minister. So Scott, when, are we providing any guidance to applicants as to which form they should choose? Is there any formal guidance published on going to the Board of Adjustment versus the, the planning and zoning commission? And it may just be that I'm not familiar, but.
It's, it's entirely the applicant's choosing.
Variances and conditional zoning are not interchangeable. The way I would describe a variance is the variance is a release valve on your zoning code to where if we applied every restriction in the zoning code, it would essentially make development on the property impossible. At that point, you apply for a variance and you can be given accommodation because otherwise the rules, the zoning ordinance make it all but impossible to build anything on the property, anything. And that's the key here. As we noted at the beginning of our presentation, and that has been noted, I think by Mr. Oliver, when we got in, and this was before the maders asked me to assist, when they got into the variance process, it became clear, well, there is something we could build. And that's what makes a variance inappropriate. It's only for those, okay, we have a unique lot, unique situation. It would be impossible to build otherwise, which is why that was withdrawn, not denied by the board, but withdrawn. And, um, frankly, why your commissioners created conditional zoning last year to deal with these situations where we don't have it being technically impossible to build something. But it might be a really good idea to get some flexibility over here in return for some commitments over there. So I'll get more into, there, there were some statements about how this violates the zoning. And I want to be clear that in no way whatsoever does it. In fact, that's part of your zoning code. Conditional zoning is an option that is intended to be used to deal with situations like this. It's not illegal. It's, it's what your commissioners contemplated to use. I don't know if that helps, but it's not a pathway where you could pick either or.
Well, that's, that's part of what I was trying to understand. And then also the, the applicants did go to the Board of Adjustment. If the answer there has been no, would they still have been able to come and request a conditional zoning?
So I, I will just briefly speak to the previous history of this, this project. I was not with the town at the time of the original approach to the Board of Adjustment. But, um, to my brief understanding, and I would have to look through the actual full language of the ordinance. To Mr. Norris' point, uh, request for a variance and request for conditional zoning are completely separate applications. One is quasi judicial, the other is legislative. So they, it's, it, they really are apples and oranges so that they're completely. it's, it, they really are apples and oranges, so that they're completely independent ask of sorts.
One of the members maybe even suggested, it, it wouldn't have existed at that time in 2019, but I think it was under contemplation about conditional zoning. May have even suggested that that would be the better mechanism to use, because again, the variances, you can't do anything with your property unless you get the variance versus conditional.
Well, the conditional zoning came in when we redid the zoning code.
Correct, that's right.
I think Mason Blake, who was here, they need that a lot. Provide more flex, it was designed to provide
I didn't want to start changing anyone else who's going to speak.
I think I, I
He'll just speak into the mic.
Anybody else want to speak?
I'll be brief. I think one of the things we're dealing with are, and you'll have this come up in Montreal a lot, you have historic lots that date back to the early nineteen hundreds, and you have modern building practices. And so conditional zoning is the tool that has been developed that allows for, again, appropriate development. What is this district intended to be? R1, low-density, single-family residences. What is this proposal? Low-density, single-family residence. The only request is an accommodation for the site setback space where the house can go shift to the, to the west of five feet in order to, at least in our view, and obviously folks disagree. Provide a lower-profile building that meets the needs of a couple who I understand, want to build their retirement and be part of this community, they've been coming here for years. I think that's exactly what conditional zoning was designed to do. The other thing to think about, and again, I'm not, this isn't in any way blaming MSD. There could be more flexibility for other options if that sewer easel wasn't over there, uh, on the other side of the property. But it is, and so that also dictates why we're heading i- in this direction. And that sewer easel benefits everyone who's on the line. And so I think that's one of those things that should be taken into consideration, again, with the flexibility. I think Mr. Oliver, I'd be the first one to say it. We need to follow the zoning code. That's the reason we have zoning ordinances. But I think the wisdom that the commissioners came up with was, yes, we're going to have rules that apply all of the time. But like all rules, there are exceptions, and that's why we've created conditional zoning. And it's not that we want to not follow the zoning code. We're saying we're gonna follow it. We're choosing to use this mechanism as a way to comply with the zoning ordinance to get that flexibility to build the house. There were also questions about the drainage. And again, this isn't in any way meant to cast aspersions on Mr. Oliver or otherwise. I understand that people have fears about things. This lot is unimproved, it's between the Ferrier house and the Oliver house. I'm sure they enjoy having that space. To watch deer, I think, well, first time I went out there, I saw deer in the back. I'm, I'm sure they're still going to be there, but I know that we all hold those things precious. And at the same time, people own property. And this is a change. And if these fears had materialized into something that we could credibly take to our professionals who have under their sealed licenses told us, this is the way to do it, we would address. But what we're hearing are fears that are not, or have not been corroborated by the kind of evidence that we need that would require a shift. And so I hear them, I understand it, but we respectfully disagree with these are actually problems. With the, I think we talked about retaining wall needing to be present no matter what, that it's likely going to be in the same location, whether it was two or three feet. And, and there was some talk about nine-inch and eight-inch storms. One was a hurricane. And I don't think it's reasonable for us to be holding homes to a standard. In fact, I have not done the math, but I asked an expert one time about what it would take to control a nine-inch ramp on a particular piece of property. And it, it, it would be an astounding piece of engineering work and expense in order to make that happen. So I think the reasonable way to treat this is let's hold our folks to the same standards everyone else has to meet for stormwater. That we have a project that is not contributing to the stormwater product or, or problem. In fact, it will minimize. And on the whole, we think this is a better solution than the three-story option that we're left with if we don't get the flexibility. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, and we do appreciate you all taking the time. We know this is public service and that probably rather be spending your day doing something else. Thank you.
We want to be good neighbors, but of course, I mean, we love it up here. It's very special in our hearts up here. But I don't think that our request is unreasonable. You know, we, if, if the surveyor hadn't made a mistake, obviously we would have designed something. But, you know, Maury spent all this time, we, we've gone to extreme expense to make sure uh, that everything is going to be as great as it can be, you know? Provided we get this extra five feet. And I don't know, I see all the homes in Montrie that survive to this day. And I know in the old days they gave all kinds of allowances because every lot is different and unique in the mountains. And, you know, I've had some, a lady reach out to me that she, she went through a similar difficult thing. Where, where the neighbors were so concerned, but we ju, we're just trying to be reasonable. I, I mean, I know we're asking a favor. I understand that. And we hope that we can get this, you know, and that everything will work out beautifully and that it won't. You know, we've done all of our due diligence. You know, we were accused of not doing due diligence, but that's just not true. We've hired the best we could in every aspect of this. So, um, there was a mistake. And we're just, we're just asking that we can get this conditional zoning to go ahead with our original plans. Thank you.
And I spoke with the Herons and the Storks, who I think are two doors down on Mississippi, or might be further uphill actually. As part of this process, they called me and they expressed that they didn't have concerns. And I think that's important for folks to know as well. Not just of those who do have concerns, but those who said, we understand.
One lady who was originally against our house completely changed her mind. She had let the other board, I think, the variance board. So that was another So we're grateful for that.
Thank you, John. Can I ask you, Scott has put before some things we need to consider in making these determinations.
Sure. Saying a three-story, but we said it was a two-story, right? And they, when they did the survey, they designed something else that they'd prefer. So, you know, I believe it's a two-story, not three-story house that you could put in this property, right?
I, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, they, they, they say, well, we prefer not to put a three-story house. Like, the, the, the plans show that it was a two-story house that you could put in this property. And they showed the elevations, how they were blue and all that other stuff. Does that make any sense? I'm not making sense.
Because the three stories included the garage, the metal. Yeah, that's the three stories.
Well, it does not have to be there. It can be
Oh, you're, oh, so you're suggesting that they're not being brought. Okay, you'd made that before in your presentation.
Yeah, yeah. Or, or the plans they have turn the garage into square footage.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Maury?
What, what Mr. Oliver's suggesting is a change in the building program, others eliminate the garage, but fact is the mators need a garage, want a garage. They, they retire here especially. They want to be able to have their car, you know, completely covered in, in climate weather and out of the snow and all of that. So that's not really a, a solution that works. So if we do redesign, have to redesign the house, it will be two stories above probably a one-car garage.
John, I just wanted to go through this with you. Okay, um, and I don't know that everybody's got this, because I don't think the copies are by. What, what Scott has suggested, some of the things we need to consider under the statute is the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area proposed to be reserved. The benefits and detriments to the landowners, the neighbors, and the surrounding community. The relationship between the current actual impermissible development on the track and adjoining areas and the development that would be permissible, permissible under the proposed amendment. Or why the action taken is in the public interest. And last, any changed conditions working. My question is, what would you propose that this action with taking would be in the public interest?
In the public interest, I think we've talked a little bit about that. It's the vegetative screening buffer that we're proposing as part of the project will further screen the house, the windows that are on that side and block view of the house from the neighboring properties. The fairier, uh, this fairier and the Olivers are the public as part of this. We are, I think, as Hutch indicated, the stormwater program for this property is, is more intense than what you typically use this for a house set five times its size. But I think there are additional benefits to the public through the in-depth stormwater system that's being used. One of the things that wasn't exactly highlighted in that stormwater is, and I think there are retention vertical pipe that's going down. Instead of, there are sedimentation benefits that come from that in an appropriately used stormwater system that reduces the amount of sediment that's going into the system. That's a benefit that comes to the, to the public. I think those are a few of them. I, I think another one that's a little less direct, but again, at least from our perspective, the scale of the building being taller, if we were to do the alternative three-story uh, and a smaller building, again, we feel is more consistent with the homes that are on Mississippi and with the neighboring properties. And we think that there's value in that, which is how things feel and fit together. So I think that'd be
And I can just speak briefly, just on a, on a technical note, um, just looking at the zoning ordinance for the existing section for landscaping requirements. I'll just make a note, it's section nine hundred point two, uh, it states the requirements of this section, which is landscaping shall apply to all land, zone, and institutional, institutional, residential, and any proposed planned unit development. So this being our one residential zoning, there is not a base requirement for landscaping. And I believe I noted that in the staff report. Just wanted to clarify that.
I will say the other meeting we had in September, the variance, um, there was a contractor on, on that board who was completely for our project. He made that very clear. He said, Montrie uh, needs reinvestment. And he said, this, this house is perfectly designed. He said, if you go narrower, I mean, he said something about the door going in, it, it just wouldn't be practical at all. So, uh, from the garage and door, whatever, I can't remember all the details. But this gentleman was absolutely one hundred percent for our house as designed. And he's a contractor.
Thank you. Okay, are y'all ready to discuss this and consider it? It's now one, it's, it's on twelve thirty. Anyone would like to discuss anything?
I'm ready. I've, I've got, I've got more doctor's appointments than I get a chance to go out to dinner. And we've got somebody that wants to retire here. Adding another floor to the house. Getting a good idea. I've got my next surgery just in ten days. And I'm only seventy-six. So, uh, that's just a factor matter of how many stories the house is. I was here for the hurricane and tropical storm. Water coming across the dam was three feet high. It didn't land in Flat Creek till it was almost past Moore Center. It was, it was this unbelievable threat. And yet Montrie handled it. Uh, when water's going from the mountains to the sea, it does what it wants to do. My family goes back to wonderful story with the Ferrier family, back to the forties and PSCE. Uh, President School of Christian Education. The barriers water coming down will be handled really well because of that vertical drain system gravel behind the wall. And that's, that's going to help. The Olivers that have a fifteen-foot setback, they'll still have a fifteen-foot setback. And it's, it, it's a stretch to say that they want the setback on the other side to, to be a restriction. The conditional use of piece was added to the ordinance because we have these peculiar lots established by a church organization uh, for modest home regeneration. Then we added a town, and those of us with conjugal became voters and made the rules. And when we, almost four years ago, Bill, uh, had, uh, community meetings to what, what should we look at as we reevaluate the zoning ordinance? But most of the comments were about how hard it is to come here, how hard it is to build. And, um, as a builder, I may be on one side. As an architect, I may be sort of on the same side. Maury's design is very, very responsive. Everything that people in Montreal like. Sails into the hill, it's modest. Very attractive. And what we came up with in planning a zoning was we, when somebody's doing something that's really reasonable, but there's an ordinance, part ordinance that just stops it. It, there's got to be a way that they don't have to go back to where they came from, that they could build. And so this conditional zoning thing was put in, and it wasn't put in with casual requirements. You've got to go before this board, you've got to go before full council. And so, uh, this is the first test case, and I think it is the perfect test case to, to show that it's good that we have it.
So summarizing, I'm hearing you say that you will be in favor. I just didn't want it to go on. Okay, I love you. Anyone else have anything that they would like to say?
Um, I would note the challenge of the circumstances, and I, I do see the tremendous care and the substantial time and financial resources that the mators have devoted to this. I mean, this is really, really tough. Um, what you all have been through to get to this point. One of the challenges that I think we face though is that you bought the lot and there was an error made uh, advising you as to what was permitted. And I am concerned that agreeing to the CZ would imply an obligation on the town to deal with that kind of burden in the future. So then an error made outside of the workings of this commission or other town ordinances then turns into an obligation by frankly setting this up.
Anyone else?
And I'll, I'll talk closely. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for coming today, really to everyone, but as Julie said, this is a difficult situation. And we love Montrie. Um, obviously, we're serving Montrie. And each of us, I know, um, want to do our very best, you know, as we talk about this today. So thank you for coming to the mayers, to the neighbors, to all of the professionals. And I would agree with Julie that yes, there was a mistake made and what precedence will it set? It's complicated. And I almost wish, can we huddle and talk, you know? It's hard to do it like this. It honestly is, because these are important, precious people involved in this whole situation. And, um, so And, um, so I'm, I'm not going to say either way, but as I mull this over in my mind, right up here at this table publicly. I do want to say thank you to each person and for the good explanations for Scott, all the time he's put into this, um, to. All of this behind the scenes work, um, we didn't just show up today. We have, all of us spent a lot of time preparing for today, learning, talking, looking at the property. And I just want to assure you that, that none of us take this lightly, um, as we work through this today.
I have spent a lot of time thinking about this as we, as have we all. Met with Mark Oliver on the site, walked the property with him, uh, looked at it very carefully. Considered all that we've heard here today. At the end of all that consideration, I, I feel like I'm somewhat imposing my own personal views place of, uh. Miss Farrier and, and Mark Oliver. But it, it just seems to me that, that what is being proposed, you know, in a. Strange way is in their best interest. And, and I guess I was a little surprised that, that Mark said that he would prefer a three-story to the two-story. And then addressing Ms. Farrier's, uh. Concerns about. The wall being five feet closer to our, our house than it needs to be. Well, the wall, the retaining wall. It appears to be in the same position, no matter what house was built. What size house was built and regardless of whether the setback was fifteen or ten, because retaining wall can be built inside the. Setback line anyway. So. At the end of the day, in a sense that I am to their concerns and, and I always think we should consider the neighbors and how they feel about it. I think I'm probably in favor of recommending approval to the council. Because I see no detriment, uh, their, their, their concerns. I understand that I'd have the same concerns. I'd prefer to have vacant lot if I lived on either side of it, but that's not what we're talking about. I, I just feel like that they've addressed it, maybe overly addressed it, but done it in a very effective way, very. Responsible way that will protect the neighbors. I think, uh. The runoff should be handled effectively, certainly as good as or better than what's being handled right now. I still do have a little bit of concern about. Miss Barry's concerns about the wall. I don't know if there's anything we could add that they could put on that side of her. To ensure that the water runoff, uh, even in heavy rains, not hurricane necessary, but heavy rains. Could be effectively addressed to modify some of her concerns. I don't know if that's possible, but it might be something we could address if, if it is approved. I'm not as concerned with all due respect to Liz and Julie about the mistake. I don't think we're setting any precedent. Uh, it doesn't. We're here, how we got here is not what's critical to me. I think we just look at each case of those pores without. Concern about why it got here or what led them to get here. They're here. Whether it was a mistake or not, they might've ended up the same place. Who knows? I just don't think that's critical to my decision anyway, but. I'm rambling a little bit, uh, stream of consciousness here and just, uh. But, but I think at the end of the day, I'm, I'm not offended by this. And, and one, one final thought, uh, and it's been touched on before, but. I had the pleasure to honor the privilege, the, the duty of serving on this. Body for the last three years was involved in the drafting of this. The redrafting of the zoning ordinance, which we added this conditional zoning option in there and as Wade kind of touched on. One of the things we kept hearing as we started that process was adding some flexibility in addition to simplifying and clarifying the ordinance in general. But was add some flexibility for the many lots in town that are, are unusable and were worthless. Uh, and there's still many other of them. And, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Newark. Very eloquently and properly described the difference in variance and conditional zoning. The variance i- is a very limited option and, and, and it's not applied to a lot of these situations. And I think conditional zoning gives that option. I think this being the first one to come before us is a perfect example of how it should work and would work. I think we still should look at it very carefully and if we're not, we deck it's. In case of reducing setbacks as the negative affecting people on the other side, I think we should consider that. And I think we have considered that. But at the end of the day, I think all those concerns and negative impacts have been addressed.
Um, yes, I, I certainly appreciate all the heartfelt comments by all of you, all the professionals. Your family and everyone here. Um, and I, I do believe that, um. Having been around where we, we, we worked these ordinances that, um. You know, this is a perfect example of why we, why we did that. And, um. Yes, there was a mistake. Mistakes happen and, um. You know, I feel like it's incumbent upon our committee and any other committee. In Monterey to help those property owners as much as possible. And like Dan said. You know, there are a lot of squirrely lots around here and we want to encourage people to move here and it's. You know, it's a big deal for somebody to do that. So, um. You know, if I had to say right now, I'm probably be in favor of, of approving. What, what your plans are. And I appreciate all the hard work that all of you have put into that. Thank you.
And I'd like to say thank you to everybody too, both applicant, Oliver, Stephanie, all of y'all who participated. Done this work. Thank you very much. I have not really heard that there would be any difference. In affecting the stormwater particularly, which does concern me. If this were not granted and the other house, the bigger house, the taller house were built. Everyone has said it would still be the same and yet there's no objection to that. On the, on the reduction of the five feet. The retention, uh, retain wall is still going to be up there close to the boundary. I was real concerned about the retaining wall early on and the whether or not that was a structure under the code. And I spent a lot of time on that. And had conferences with Scott and John and others and I, and I, and Ben came and met together. I'm convinced that under the definitions of the code, a retaining wall is not subject to the. Setback requirements because it is not part of the building that's being built. The setbacks often turn to buildings, not structures. That may be something that needs to be clarified as we look into the zoning when it's going forward. So I, a- a- and with no real difference, I'm inclined to be in favor of. Of granting the exception. But I do think that we have an opportunity. I really appreciate the work that particularly Mason and Dan did on the ordinance. We have an opportunity now to put conditions in there that will be helpful. I think not only to the applicants, but also to the neighbors. So I, I want to suggest that we do. Consider, uh, putting in his conditions, the landscaping buffer. I think we ought to put in some conditions related to the tree over there, that some effort be made. More than just lip service to trying to keep the tree. Mr. Oliver suggested a fund. I don't know if that's the appropriate thing, but I do think that we ought to talk about some conditions related to that. I think we ought to have a condition that the MSD grant their approval. You haven't applied yet, but we want to make sure that they do approve it. And I do think that we ought to make clear that none of the excavations related to the retaining wall. Will extend over into this farrier's lot. So I'm in, given that this is conditional zoning, I, I do think it becomes a precedent as how we treat it. That we're treating it like we're supposed to treat it. And I don't think we should penalize anybody just because we think it might. Bear a burden later. The burden will take care of itself. So I'm inclined to, uh. Vote in favor of it. And, uh, I think that we could, we, to get the sense of the committee, I'd like to take that. This is just I be, uh, just making ideas now. We need to come back and we need to have a written document. We can't do that today. I think it needs to be thought out. I'm happy to begin drafting something with Scott. And maybe any of y'all, but we need to come back and then consider that. So we have it in black and white and so that the applicants can see what the. Conditions might be and that we, we then can, can adopt it. So I think it's preliminary to send to the council now until we get that right. So I want to propose that we vote with the understanding that. Where our vote is still conditioned upon approval of the final written document.
For the benefit of the board, I just wanted to address those conditions the chairman mentioned. Absolutely committed to the landscape. What we would suggest with the tree is, is partly what we've done, but.
Can't hear you.
What we would suggest with the tree, just to talk. It is that we, we would offer as a condition that we will retain a licensed arborist. Who would use best management practices within his or her field to preserve the life of the tree. I think that's about as good as we can promise. Um, is to use an expert in that field to maintain the health of that tree. I, I don't know, and Scott may be able to look into this, but I don't believe that we're legally allowed to exchange money in return. Know that there had been a ten thousand dollar suggestion. I don't think that that's something that we can do. We would prefer to use conditions on the side of let's achieve the goal, which is keeping the tree alive and, and exploring what that might be. Uh, and then the last two, I think we're fine with the MSD approval. Um, we'd need that anyways to put anything in there easement and we're fine with. No trespassing on this barrier as part of the design of the retaining wall.
I wanted to address the, the tree. Historically, uh, we have found that, uh. A tree might be saved, it might not. Everybody's interest is that that tree is saved. But because of the liabilities of what happens to a tree and we have to take it down, we've never. Done anything that says you can't cut your trees on your property. And, um. Somebody says it's gonna fall. And he gets sued and so forth. When you do any construction. The tree will be impacted. God has a pretty good plan for replacing. Especially Monterey. So the start of the years I've been on different board in town. We don't tell people.
So the suggestion that they would agree to engage a licensed arborist and they would use reasonable efforts to. Based on those recommendations that.
Yeah, we, we, we've already had the man come out. He's fabulous. He has a plan in place. Yeah, I mean, it's just been, it's just been two or three years ago, but we would still retain.
Okay, so that would be a logical condition. Let me just finish one thing. I do think we ought to have as a condition that applicants will continue to confer. With the neighbors as they perceive, not that there's binding, but I think that communication is very.
Uh, also just make one quick, a quick point of clarification regarding preservation or saving of trees, just to go to the town's. Tree ordinance, the town's tree ordinance currently only applies to public trees, trees within the public right of ways. So trees on private property. Or at least for the purposes of the ordinance, not regulated.
But that doesn't mean the parties couldn't agree.
Certainly, I'm just, just making that note on a, I guess, any possible question of a technicality on the town's tree ordinance. Just clarifying that.
I, I just wanted to ask, I know that Mr. Nora had mentioned earlier that he didn't believe that addressing the stormwater. Concerns that the neighbors have. Met the, the need for conditions to be granted, uh, approval of a conditional zone. But is the applicant willing to offer anything?
They have said that inartfully. I think what we are saying is that we've heard the concerns. We don't think the concerns. Will materialize. Our experts have said, I hear you, but we just don't agree that those are actually going to occur. So it's not that we don't want to do anything. Our experts are saying you've done all you need to, not just need, but all of this sufficient to control for this problem. And again, as we offered two months ago, roughly two months ago. We're wrong. We'd love for you to present the evidence as to why we've done this wrong. We just not got it.
I certainly understand that. I'm just asking as we go to vote, is there anything else the applicants want to offer?
I would need to. I would have to talk with our experts to see what we could actually offer. That isn't already in place that would make it better because again, from the barrier standpoint, that's uphill. So there's really. I almost want to say it's impossible that there could be a stormwater issue going uphill from, from our, the major property for the Oliver standpoint. Uh, I would need to confer with, with.
I would say that during the crafting of the document itself, we'll see how that is actually articulated. And then we could get some, is that making sense?
This, and the reason I ask because I, I, I know that we need to go to a vote. I, I am really struggling with this part of it because it is a primary concern of the neighbors. And I understand the need to meet requirements. And also that experts have been hired to enable that. I completely understand that. I also, unless I am brought on this, after things are approved and built. Then what protects the neighbors if in fact it's not sufficient? Because the ordinance in play are older for milestone order. And those kinds of issues. So I'm struggling with what the condition could be. I don't think I could suggest one right now.
Just remember that this whole war issue is going to be the same. With the other house with this episode. That sort of mollifies that. But I do think we do need to see what these, what these express.
Mr. Chairman, I, and I would suggest and somewhat respond in the, uh, what Mr. Newark just said. The Farrier property, it is a, up higher, nothing's gonna happen to that house. If I understood, uh, Ms. Barry's concerns, it was at the bottom of her bank. She doesn't want erosion start occurring there. It could start crumbling from her bank at some point. So I think there is some erosion concerns on her side. In some ways, maybe more so than Mr. Oliver's side, but I understand the concerns on both sides. But I think. Perhaps we can somehow address that. I'm not sure how, but I think there is a potential for some erosion concerns on her side. Water usually flowed right down. It's now hitting the wall and stopping. Is there gonna be some erosion and backing up of the water that's gonna affect her steep bank?
And I don't want to misspeak, so if I say this wrong, it's not gonna hit the wall. So again, the swell that's designed there goes into the swell.
It'll slow the flow down.
Funnels down again, the purpose of the wall is to make sure that that water then goes down. So there are multiple features as part of that detention system that deal with the stormwater. Now, the, your question about. The, the, there's not going to be any erosion once the wall is in place and the practices that we've had designed by a structure or by the geotechnical engineer, correct? Have taken into account in the construction of the retaining wall to eliminate. Based on his professional opinion, all risk related to excavation into the side of the wall on her side. I mean. I guess I'm trying to delicately say, I hear and understand concerns. But you, I think any reasonable word has to look at what are substantiated concerns and what are just concerns. We have a structural engineer, a geotechnical engineer, forgive me, that has said, this is exactly how you build this wall. To avoid the concern that's been expressed. We have a landscape architect who's designed the stormwater system to say, this is exactly the system I would design to address the concern. That has been expressed. So I don't know what more we can do. When we're already doing what the professionals have told us, this is exactly what you should be doing to address those concerns. And I did turn to Hutch and say, is there anything else we could be? Offering and then his response is. Not really. I mean, we've, we've already gone, as he indicated, above and beyond with a system that they wouldn't use for a home that's five times the size. To control water for one that's roughly eleven hundred. And it's not that we are insensitive to the concerns. I think it's the fine balance of I hear concerns. But just because we disagree doesn't mean that we have to. To your point, what would we add? My professionals are saying, there really isn't. We've already gone there. And so I'm in a, an awkward position saying, there's nothing. And so I'm in a, an awkward position saying, there's nothing I can really offer you that's more than what we've already promised to do.
And we got instructions right up front. That the issue is a side yard setback on, on the barrier side. Uh, and the, um, setback on the other side is sort of, is, is not in play. It's almost like, you know, do we consider, well, I have too many quad directives at the time.
Well, um, I would say, uh, as Foster does, you and Dan, we could provide a condition y'all continue to, uh, direct your attention to and consider these, these type, types of issues like the, the setback. Uh, um, I, I know that you could be real formal and say we're done and we're gonna stop the discussion, but I believe in things like this in the legislative capacity, the more you talk about it, the more you evolve. Mark, you sit there to say something. I, I don't wanna just.
So you can't.
It's for the purposes of the meeting minutes.
That tree, our property line goes right in the middle of it. We split that tree. So it's, it's important as well.
Sure. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
We request, it sounds like this will need to obviously be reduced to writing, be approved at your next meeting. But we would, from the applicant's standpoint, request a condition, a vote for conditional approval subject to final review of the permanent order or something like that.
That's what we're getting ready to do. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Are y'all ready to vote subject to the final? So. Everybody wants to vote for it, but nobody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the town council that they approve the application of conditional zoning permit subject to the conditions that we have discussed and to be fine tuned at the next meeting.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion unanimously carries. Um, we've still got lots of work to do on this, but we will do that in good faith. Mark, we want you involved. And, um, Stephanie, if you're still on, we want you involved too. And, um, it's our, as someone said, I guess Liz, that, um, this was the first time we're doing it, maybe Julie said it. So we wanna make sure we do the best we can with it as an example going forward. So we've still got work to do and let's, we'll come together. Our meeting is June the.
Night. This is tentatively scheduled.
At 10:30.
Correct.
And we hopefully will have drafts and we'll hopefully circulate the drafts ahead of time. And, uh, we will also circulate that to Mr. Nor. And Mark will make sure you get a copy of that too. And Stephanie. Okay, is there a, do we have any other business to do? Have we left anything up? Move to adjourn. Is there a second?
I second.
Before we vote on it, I wanna thank y'all for your, as Liz says, y'all all have done a lot of work on this ahead of time. I think everybody has been out to the site. I've been out more than once. And I know Mark has been gracious in helping Dan. And, um, just thank you for the hard work. Scott, again, thank you for your hard work. And we appreciate the thoroughness with which this has been presented. So now we are adjourned.